I would like to make a motion to approve item A A and A B.
Second.
On the question. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Council Greenwood?
Yes.
Council Mosley?
Yes.
Council Dean?
Yes.
Council Easton?
Yes.
Mayor Hitt?
Yes.
Bye bye, some names.
Item nine, citizens comments. Oh. Okay. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Council, item A A. Council Greenwood?
Yes.
Council Mosley?
Yes.
Council Dean?
Yes.
Council Easton?
Yes.
Mayor Hitt?
Yes.
Bye bye, some names.
Motion passed.
Ms. Bell, please call the roll for item A B. An ordinance for the mayor and city council to approve the emergency purchase of a telecommunications generator.
Council Greenwood?
Yes.
Council Mosley?
Yes.
Council Dean?
Yes.
Council Easton?
Yes.
Mayor Hitt?
Yes.
Bye bye, some names.
Motion passed.
Item nine, citizens comments. Ms. Dorothy Joshua.
Um, I just have one, uh, comment for you. And could you explain, uh, for me, an ordinance granted, special use permit? Um, what is that about? Can you just give a little more information what it's about or?
City manager.
Reason for, uh, for this decision?
Okay, use permit.
Yeah.
Sure. Mike White was going to.
Okay.
Uh, there was a special use request that was made. That is, uh, I forget the, the name of the church that's there. But essentially, uh, there is a company that has a potential contract with the Federal Bureau of Prisons that is looking to put in a halfway house for 21 female inmates that are being reintroduced into the workforce. And they have a working relationship with some of the major retailers, Home Depot, Walmart, et cetera. And these people are nonviolent offenders who are given jobs and then have, as part of their sentence, have to live in a, in a halfway house where they are reporting essentially on a daily basis. So that is an R1 designation, uh, that requires a special use permit under our zoning code. There was a public hearing that was had by the, uh, planning commission, uh, back, yeah, I believe it was June 15th. Uh, all of the requisite property owners were given notice. It's all of the adjacent property owners plus property owners within 250 feet of the, of the outermost boundary of the parcel being requested for the permit. Uh, I believe, judging by, I was not at the meeting, but I read the notes of the planning commission. It's, it looked as if three, uh, citizens spoke in favor of the project. No one spoke against the project. Uh, and that it came to the council with recommendations from the planning commission about studying of the location. That's a, that's an advisory opinion to the council. The council, uh, can take its own, uh, make its own decision. Essentially, the vetting of the project by the planning commission was that the project itself was sound and that they believed that, uh, that should, it could be in another location, but that the project itself was sound.
The end of, have your questions, Joshua.
So does that mean that, uh, halfway house is gonna go there? That's what I'd like to know. Cause I would let that planning commission meet.
That means that the underlying request for the, for the permit has been approved or will be approved at council meeting or be considered for approval at council meeting next week. That whether that, uh, whether the, the, the business itself will actually, you know, come to fruition, we can't comment on that. The only thing the city's been requesting to do is allow for the use of that particular parcel for a halfway house on the city's own.
So that means that it's gonna be a halfway house there?
I think it could be. If, if they have everything else in line, they would be permitted to open a halfway house there on the zoning code.
Ma'am.
We also, Ms. Joshua, we also have the opportunity, council has the opportunity to, for those who have not had the opportunity to vet that location, uh, before council meets on next week. So, um, if there are any concerns, I know that the planning commission did have some concerns with the location, with the location. But I, I wanted to know, did the residents, what was the response from the residents? Did they submit a petition? I wasn't sure about that. Do you?
Well, it was from the petition. Some of the people that signed the petition did not live in that, uh, did not live in that area. And then, um, you know, you have new development going up and, and, you know, what, what's the, what's gonna happen to the new development to throw a halfway house right in their face?
So, it's, yeah, it was my understanding that the, the recommendation from the planning commission that the concept as far as a halfway house in the city and the business wasn't sound, but they didn't approve of the location because of, I believe it was Sinai, um, the monument that's going on in Sinai, uh, because they believe that it would, um, it would be, you know, on their progress of going to separate phases. And given that location, the planning commission's concern was that it shouldn't locate somewhere else. So, and, and, I mean, just to.
On board. Um, should I add all these questions asked before we vote? We're gonna vote it now, so we need to move on. Cause we're voting down, so I don't wanna keep dehashing it. You got any other questions to deal with that offline?
Thank you, Ms. Joshua. B, Ms. Natavia Sanders. Ms. Bell, please call for the adjournment of the Public Safety Committee.
Council Greenwood?
Yes.
Council Mosley?
Yes.
Council Dean?
Yes.
Council Easton?
Yes.
Mayor Hitt?
Yes.
Bye bye, some names.
Ms. Bell, please call the roll to a staff inform for the finance committee.
Council Dean?
Yes.
Council Easton?
Council Greenwood? Yes.
Council Mosley? Mayor Hitt?
Present.
You have five presents.
Item two, presentation of the minutes from the meeting held on Thursday, May 5th, 2016. I like the mo, a mo, I like the rule for approval. Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Council Dean?
Yes.
Council Easton?
Yes.
Council Greenwood?
Yes.
Council Mosley?
Yes.
Mayor Hitt?
Yes.
Bye bye, some names.
Item three, presentation of departmental reports. Item A, monthly report from the city treasurer for the month of February 2016. Item B, monthly report from the city treasurer for the month of March 2016. Item C, monthly report from the city treasurer for the month of April 2016. Item D, monthly report from the city treasurer for the month of May 2016. Item E, monthly report from the purchasing department for the month of May 2016. Monthly report for the budget, I'm sorry. Item three, monthly report from the budget department for the month of May 16, 2016. And item G, monthly report from the budget department for the month of June 2016. I like the motion for approval for items three, A through G.
Second.
Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Council Dean?
Yes.
Council Easton?
Yes.
Council Greenwood?
Yes.
Council Mosley?
Yes.
Mayor Hitt?
Yes.
Bye bye, some names.
Item four, presentation of subcommittee reports. There are none. Item five, A, presentation, I'm sorry. Item five, presentation of ordinances and resolutions. Item five, A, an audit, an ordinance for the mayor and city council to approve the 2016 Tiff budget amendment. I like the motion for approval, five A.
Second. So who?
Second. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
I have a question. I have a question. Um, Mr. Bennett?
Yes, sir.
There's been some changes to this budget amendment. Can you walk through these changes quickly?
Yep, uh, if you want, if you all want, there's not that many, but if you wanna go to page three of the actual budget document, actually that's page four. Um, essentially there were a few projects, sewer project as well as a street project in Tiff District 1 and 3A that was not, um, included in the previous budget amendment. And we've made act, actual adjustments to, um, to account for the particular projects. In exchange, the demolition line item actually decreased so that we can make those changes. Also, in the previous budget amendment, there was two clean team positions that were, um, that were being taken out of that budget amendment. We, uh, removed that and just leaving those positions as is. So, in a nutshell, those are the only changes that, um, we're doing within this particular Tiff budget amendment.
So the street project is located where? Where in the sewer block there?
Um, you say this, hold on for a second. It's a sewer project in Tiff 3, in Tiff 3, Tiff 1. Sewer project, I have no idea what that project is. I think, uh, that's a project that the Public Works Department is, is working on.
So wait, has that been lit yet or was it emergency?
I am not sure. No, that project is, is ongoing. What happened is there are some projects due to the changing in personnel in the Public Works Department, things that were supposed to happen last year that didn't get taken care of. And now that company is basically saying, okay, we owe this amount of money for the sewer project. So we're just basically adjusting so that we can basically make the final adjustment for, to pay out on that project.
So, so we didn't have this information in June?
No, I wasn't aware of it in, in, I wasn't aware of it when I created the budget meeting to be approved in June. So yes, you're correct.
Are there any more questions? I'll let the original, it's always been silent, that's it. Item five, B, an ordinance for the mayor and city council to.
You, you have a motion and a second.
Do I have a second?
Are you withdrawing your motion and second? Do you want?
Is everybody, does it seem like there is some hurry about this new, these new items added here? Is that what it is? You don't have any?
Patricia, call.
Call, bro.
Okay. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Council Dean?
Yes.
Council Easton?
Yes.
Council Greenwood?
No.
Council Mosley?
No.
Mayor Hitt?
Yes.
Three, eight, two, nine.
Motion passed.
Item five, B, an ordinance for the mayor and city council to approve the 2016 general fund budget amendment. I'd like to make a motion for approval, five D. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Council Dean?
Yes.
Council Easton?
Yes.
Council Greenwood?
No.
Council Mosley?
No.
Mayor Hitt?
Yes.
Three, eight, two, nine.
Motion passed.
Item six, presentation of correspondence and memorandum. There are none. Item seven, old business. Is there any old business? Item eight, new business. Is there any new business?
I'm down here with that little timer shot.
Do you have people?
What's the citizens?
Citizen com, okay. Item nine, citizen comments. Ms. Dorothy Joshua.
I'd like to know from the Councilman Mosley and Councilman Greenwood, the reason for them voting no on, uh, on the budget amendment, Tiff and the general fund. Because this amendment has been coming before council now for over two months and, uh, it continues to be voted no. Now, I do know when, uh, we had the ex-mayor and the ex-city manager, manager, uh, before us, there was not, I don't think, uh, Councilman Mosley, the word no ever came because I do recall at one council meeting, you didn't know what was being voted on and just because he was for it, you changed your no vote to a yes vote. This ordinance for the Tiff budget, I'm not for Tiff and I never have been and I never will be, but this needs to be moved forward. We as past peers deserve to know why, when you all vote no, we deserve to know the reason why you all are voting no. So could you, uh, Councilman Mosley and could you, Councilman Greenwood, explain to the few citizens that are left standing here because of this nonsense? Could you explain to us why you all are voting no, your reason for it? I would appreciate it.
Ms. Joshua, I will continue to work with the budget director and the city manager in addressing the concerns that I have with the amendments. We've been having ongoing conversations. I've spoken with the president pro town, the mayor, and, uh, the budget director and the city manager about my concerns. And I am for 100% moving the city forward. So we just need to hammer out some things that's within the amendment.
Okay. Item nine, B, Ms. Natavia Sanders. Is this the final question, sir? Final question that you have?
So make it, um, I can't, I heard, uh, I opened up my touch on the camera and I didn't know, like, they say, what, what do y'all, um, man, they tell you all here? Someone checking out, man, what?
What's your name, sir?
Don't know your name.
You, for the, for the business license, did you?
Yes.
One day?
Yes.
Gee.
You talking about the business license or the fee? No, the business license.
I think it's kind of, I don't remember the name. It was taken off, it's on me. I can't remember what it was. But we'll investigate it.
I'd like to vote for it, chairman. Ms. Bell, please call the roll.
Council Dean?
Yes.
Council Easton?
Yes.
Council Greenwood?
Yes.
Council Mosley? Council Mosley? Council Mosley?
Yes.
Mayor Hitt?
Yes.
Bye bye, some names.
Community development. Ms. Bell, would you please call the roll for the community development.
Council Mosley? Council Dean?
Present.
Council Easton?
Present.
Council Greenwood?
Present.
Mayor Hitt?
Present.
You have five.
Item two, presentation of the minutes from the meeting held on Thursday, May 5th, 2016. Is there a motion?
For move.
Been moved by Councilman Easton. Is there a second?
Sure.
Seconded by Councilman Mosley. Do we have any questions? Ms. Bell, would you please call the roll?
Council Mosley?
Yes.
Council Dean?
Yes.
Council Easton?
Yes.
Council Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hitt?
Yes.
Bye bye, some names.
Item three, presentation of departmental reports. We have three A, the monthly report from Employee Services for the month of May 2016. Item three B, the monthly report from Employee Services for the month of June 2016. Item three C, monthly report from the Tiff Department for the month of May 2016. And item three D, monthly report from the Tiff Department for the month of June 2016. Is there a motion to approve, to receive items three A through three D?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Easton, seconded by Councilman Mosley. Do we have any questions? Madam clerk, I mean, I'm sorry. Ms. Bell, would you please call the roll?
Council Mosley?
Yes.
Council Dean?
Yes.
Council Easton?
Yes.
Council Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hitt?
Yes.
Bye bye, some names.
Motion passed.
Item four, presentation of subcommittee reports. We don't have any at this time. Item five, presentation of ordinances and resolutions. We don't have any at this time. Item six, uh, presentation of correspondence and memorandum. We don't have any. Item seven, we have any old business under community development? Any old business? Item eight, we have any new business under community development? Item nine, citizens comments. We have nine A, Ms. Dorothy Joshua.
No, we have any for this committee.
Okay. Item nine B, Ms. Natavia Sanders.
I'm not a teddy bear, say something. Man, okay. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you, chairman, and I'm here this evening. That is an honor. And thank you for hearing what I have to say tonight. This is in regards to National Night Out. Um, we're going to do it really big this year. Um, it's about community engagement. It is going to be, and this is really community development as well as public safety because it's community and police coming together and building that relationship. And why do the things that's going on in Ferguson? And why do the things that's going on around us in the world? East St. Louis can always hold that torch up. And God, it's not happening to us in this community. And we need to continue to be on the forefront and speaking out and showing what can be done regarding about positive police and community relations. So that we can curb crime in our community. And that's very important to us. We just want each of you members on the council to be aware that this year will be implemented August 2nd, which is Tuesday. It is from 5 to 7. Last year, Mary did a wonderful job and I was very happy to see you there. And I hope this year we can see the same thing, um, with Toyota, of course. We would appreciate that, public safety. So any support, you know, most things that we do as an organization, we do spearhead alone. Um, so we would like you to consider being part and really joining in this year and helping to make a huge success. We'll have people from Washington, Chicago, Springfield, St. Clair County, a lot of different organizations will be joining into this public action so that our community can become better engaged citizens. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to add, council, um, having had the opportunity to talk to each one of you, one of the things that we have a commissioned economic development manager and our volunteer planning department to look at, and he had the opportunity to talk about it, is the downtown area and the development of the downtown area. Um, citizens, we have properties that we own on Collinsville Avenue. And one of the things that this administration is looking at is the possibility of us developing ourselves. We, uh, believe that now is the time for us to help ourselves and we have the opportunity. That's not to say that we're not working with others who are willing to come in and develop, but we have the opportunity to do some things. So I just wanted to let council know that there are some, there's some research going on. Um, a couple of the properties have been looked at, the Union Bank, as well as the Distancing. And, uh, so we have those departments looking at that. And, and soon, when they get a, a presentation together, they'll be presenting to council and then to the community about what it is that we want to do in the downtown area. So we just wanted the citizens to know. Economic development is definitely on our list and, and, uh, our departments are working right now as we speak, researching and getting, gathering information, uh, for us all. So I just want us to be thinking in terms of, of, of really working together and pooling our resources that we already have here in East St. Louis. We have businesses that we can reinvest in. Um, and, and I just believe that if we start from that, helping each other, we'll, we'll do great. So just wanted you guys to know that.
Mayor, Daddy, could we, uh, the hotel?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You just talk about the.
Eventually. Yes, sir. We have, yes, we got a lot to talk about.
Did you know that the, uh, the old Walgreen is up for auction?
I did not know, but that is really good information to know. I know that the, uh.
It's in the option this time?
Okay.
And the, the, uh, place next to, uh, the building that, uh, our former city manager used to have, it, that building is up for auction?
John?
No.
No one is to.
On the, on the option side of, on this side of.
City manager, can you duly know that?
It's up, it's up for auction. And, uh, you can check, the Murphy Building, Blumster, but they tell me it's in the option also. So if he's checking one, you can check three and four more and make sure that, uh, that's what's going on. It's there in option now. And you need to get your option book and look through it. I thought you knew it, but you didn't know.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Mosley. And I know that the economic development manager, uh, has also been talked with some of the owners downtown and they are willing to work along with, uh, the city. So we, we, we got some things to do. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the community development.
Say it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I just get one quick bit of information?
Sure.
That Councilman Mosley referenced the property of the Mosley, the, uh, Mosley building, the Murphy building. Um, if you, if the council recalls, we were, are in the process of legating that to get a judicial deed. It's still in the, uh, possession of the developer and the court has granted our motion, so we're waiting for it to be entered. Once that happens, we'll take control of that and file a P tax form so that the property taxes will take it off of the tax option. But I'm glad Councilman Mosley said that because if it is on the tax auction block, we need to notify the trustee as a type of litigation, uh, so that they know to take it off the, off the auction block. So I will take care of that. Thank you, council.
Thank you. And also, can we, I would like for us to take a look at that other property, the Walgreen Economic, because I did not.
Yeah.
There is another piece of property, uh, that blue building, current around St. Clair Avenue, that's also up for auction.
I, I don't know, you look in the book, you didn't, I don't want to.
No, I'm not saying if you wanna get it, but I know that's, I'm sorry, council.
I won't say, I, I do know those within the book, in the book.
Okay.
Others in the book too. People ready for that too, Mayor. They have, they have, they have go for, trying to buy the, the Murphy building, not the Murphy building, the Green Walgreen, can't you remember? So you wanna buy, I guess, sell it back to the city of, you know, I don't know. So you need to get a copy of that. And also while I'm talking, I, I mentioned to the city manager that New Hope Church will be, uh, area for when it get too hot. Remember that city manager, I mentioned that to you?
Coolant center, sir.
Come on, expand on that.
You want to expand?
Oh, um, we, me and Ms. Mosley had a discussion, except we hope we, one of, one of the cooling centers, um, I'm gonna get a fire emergency, um, management director and talk to him about it and, and also probably get with, um, Red Cross because they wanna know where our cooling centers are so they can send other types of resources throughout the summer to help us with them. So we will do that, Mr. Council.
We do want to mention to him because I'm a trustee at Red and New Hope, and we voted on it Sunday to allow that. So I'm pretty sure that any of you that's in charge, we will send a letter or let you know about, whatever. So I just want to just mention it. And I don't want to take nothing for granted, send a letter already. I want you to know, that the, that the president know that when it get too hot in June, July and August, you can come there because we got some volunteers that's gonna be working with you. Thank you.
Thanks, council.
Last thing, just for everybody in the council, just let you guys know. We're planning a community movie night, um, for July 23rd. Um, we are planning to get that event sponsored by Private Donner. Uh, we're gonna rent a 33-foot screen. Uh, there's gonna be free popcorn for everybody out there. This is gonna happen at the, um, Welcome to East St. Louis sign, gentlemen, St. Clair. This is going to happen at the, um, Welcome to East St. Louis sign in gentleman St. Clair, so please let everyone know to come on out. Um, we, we planning to do some type of campaign and let the community know, or let, give some, get some input from them on what type of movie they want to see. So we haven't picked a movie yet, but we have signed the contract already for movie night. So it'll be July the 23rd, they're going to start around 7:00 P.M., so just let everybody know.
Okay, I guess I'll go ahead, and since we're talking about that, I, I want to take the opportunity to thank, um, everyone that has participated in our first project, which is the Welcome Sign area for the Restoration of Hope Initiative. Um, it has been phenomenal. Um, we've had donations on every end, and so we've been able to, from the side, to the portable potties, to the equipment, to the new sign that will be put up, to the electrical work that had to be done, all the way to the new sidewalks that will be laid. Uh, these are all corporate citizens chiming in along with, in addition to our citizens and our, and our youth workers. So I just want to take the time out to thank everyone, and to also let everyone know that now when you ride on the metro, you can see past by there, those, all the trees and all the greenery that was there. There's a little bit left of beautification, but all the rest that wasn't so beautiful and that was causing a public, possible public safety has, has been removed. Um, also, um, adjacent to the, the, the grass area, there was also another huge area of vegetation, mostly trees, and that too has been removed. We're still working on, next week, the sidewalks will be laid and then we'll do a little bit more grooming and beautifying of the area, but we just want to thank everybody, uh, for everything that they have done. Donated water, food, the community really chiming in, and it just goes to show what we can do when we work together. And in addition to that, we also want you to know that there's a plan to maintain that, okay? So any project that we do, we have a plan to maintain as well. Just wanted you to know that, and we'll be moving on. The next project will begin July 18th, and we'll be moving on around, and we plan on continuing in our, uh, central business area, uh, the downtown area, and, and some of those entrances and, and main areas, uh, there will be a lot of work going on. It won't just be for the summer, so we, we, uh, we just want to thank everyone for that. And I know we have, I know we have a second and a motion to adjourn that I put for Ms. Natavia.
Yes, thank you, man. I appreciate that. For those who don't know, I'm Terrence Taylor with Community Development Sustainable Solutions, I'm the vice president. And, uh, you know, unfortunately, we are a young organization, we're going, I'm four years old now, and we have had a few lumps, but, um, the thing is, we have some paperwork now that we put forward, you know, before we actually do business or give ideas of, you know, uh, our, our layout of our mental real estate. So there's, uh, you know, we, we try to bring that to the city, and we want, you know, our ideas and, and things that we have, you know, because we bring grants that are public and private, that are non-profit, that are non-profit organizations has to deal with the city, you know, to, uh, to go forward. So before we lay out some of that mental real estate, you know, because we just passed up on the grant, and we tried to put that paperwork in first, you know, before we actually laid out the grant, which we already had. But the deal is, you know, we would like for the city to know, when we come with our paperwork, you know, don't get afraid of it, you know, just look at it for what it is, and what it is is us trying to be on the up and up with you guys and trying to lay out our mental real estate and, uh, provide some funding for the city. Because a lot of times those grants are, city has to be fiscal agents, you know, so when we come like that, you know, don't get afraid. It's, it's, we're coming for money, we're coming so that we can bring some development in the community, okay? And that's all my thing.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Natavia. And make sure we partner at the initial stage of, you know, what's going on. There is a motion, the second of the floor, to the jurors. Madam Clerk, please call. I mean, Ms. Bell, I'm sorry.
Council Mosley? Council Mosley?
Yes.
Council Dean?
Yes.
Council Easton?
Yes.
Council Pitts?
Yes.
Yes.